Um, yes, sir. Roll call for the six eighteen. Work session. Mayor Pertham Howe.
Here.
Councilman Crane.
Here.
Mayor Lindsay.
Here.
Councilman Humbert.
Here.
And Councilman Weeks.
Here.
While present.
Um, at this time, I would ask. For a motion to approve the agenda, but I would like to move item A. Down the list until uh. Mister Martinez is available.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with item A being moved down to be discussed later. A second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, currently skipping item A, moving on to item B. Discussion. RFP twenty twenty four dash zero ten Attorney Legal Services. Manager Weir.
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor Council, I just wanted to make the the council aware that um. With your, we will be coming at the next uh meeting on the twenty fifth to ask for your approval. You go out to RFP for new may. Uh, do.
Now he walks.
Manager Weir, I I am recording. Uh, new legal counsel, um. Uh, uh, to be honest, I just think that uh the scope of our legal counsel, I'd like to expand. Um, what I've been trying to get help in the areas of water rights. Uh, contacted our previous legal counsel, Joe Canepa, spoken to him once, had Dan Rakes speak to him multiple times. And uh, of late, he's not responding. Uh, so, um, that and uh some other things that we're looking at personnel matters and so on. I think that uh we could um. Uh, for us to find a different legal counsel to handle, be able to handle all of these different issues would be better for the village instead of. Uh, trying to find expertise in one place or another and have. Issues, uh, multiple issues with multiple legal councils like we had today. So basically, I just wanted y'all to know to see if y'all had any questions. Uh, the reason we put this work session on is because the next meeting is going to be very long. I didn't wanna, wondered it to be over before midnight. Um, so, uh, I thought the issues that we could, that are gonna be on the next agenda, we could. Kind of have a conversation now about. And if there's anything that you need us to do research on or anything, we could get it done before the next meeting. So that that meeting uh proceeds as quickly as possible since it's gonna have a lot of agenda items on it.
So are we set up now where we're. We're looking for legal counsel in each individual area of expertise instead of one overall? I mean, I know we have.
Well, we are, and part of that is I've tried to work with the on-call attorney. Um, and you know, he's been good at some things and has been very slow to respond at some things. I've sent him emails that he's not responded to. Um, he did come out and do the session for the larger tax committee, which I was very appreciative of. He did spend time with uh Lieutenant Strickland to talk to about what he's gonna be presenting today. Uh, but in other cases, like I said, I. I sent him an email to ask for an agreement on one thing and um. You know, it was a pretty simple request and he, uh, in my opinion, made it way more complicated than it needed to be. Um, there are other areas of expertise that um we've relied on other legal counsel for and. Uh, I just think that I think we need to look for a new legal counsel.
And this has been in discussions since January.
We've been talking about it since January because in the beginning, when we first uh came on board. It was over a month before our current legal counsel responded to anything. Now, I understand that he was uh on vacation in Europe or something. But I guess nobody was checking his email or his messages. And uh, I mean, and we had issues that we wanted to deal with and it actually uh. Uh, the end result of that may, it hasn't yet, but it's still in the works and could end up being detrimental to the.
Any other questions or comments for Manager Weir? As we move on to item C. Discussion. Uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two wildfire protection fees. Manager Weir.
Um, yes, sir, I mean, this is the time of year where we're looking to increase any of the uh. Uh, potential fees. Um, I believe the CPI index is three point one, what was it? The three point three is what I was saying, three point three. Uh, so i- in your packet, you can see last year's fees and um. What I'm, so at this point, on these fees, we can actually um. We can actually increase these fees to uh anything that uh that the council would like to increase them to. I mean, I I do like the fact that they're round numbers and I'd like to try and keep it uh something in that. Uh, something that's round, but I also would like to see a little bit of an increase. Uh, in these numbers and I'm. Uh, asking the council for advice on what they think that these amounts should be.
So there's a note on mine and and something I know we've talked about at the Fire Adaptive Committee that. We eventually want to get to where we're certifying lots to go to a minimum, if I'm reading this right, that. The minimum fee is ten bucks currently, but that's.
Currently, the minimum fee is ten dollars, that's correct.
But that's for lots of one acres or less, so. If you have somebody that has a half acre lot. Clearing their, or certifying their lots is gonna result in no reduction.
Well, it's still ten dollars.
Still ten dollars, it's ten dollars whether it's certified or not.
Right. Based on what I'm God Woods note on our packet. I mean, as you know, I'm I'm a. I would still like to re. Visit this entire fee structure, um. But I don't think we're in a position to do it today. Based on uh eliminating. The fees for certified lots, right now, we don't have a process in place, anyone qualified, correct?
Um, and we need to go through an ordinance in order to support us for that if we want to do something. Uh, to that effect, and these all have ordinances behind them, the previous resolutions. That are allowed by the ordinance to designate the fees associated with those ordinances.
Right.
So, um. If we're looking at changing the ordinance. Um, I mean, we, if you want, we could leave these fees as they are and then just look to in the July, August timeframe, working on changing the ordinance. Um, I haven't. Got any recommendations from anybody to uh change the ordinance as yet, so.
So the the last Fire Adaptive Committee meeting, that was basically where we got to is, you know, we we think we're we're gonna be, you know, getting all of the old material chipped. Um, you know, we've got to get that paperwork from Universal Waste to do so. But the thought process there was if if we can make the backlog go away, it's time to. Get to work on rewriting that ordinance, again, copying more of the Ria Dosa. Structure. Um. And and the thought was, I I think what Mayor Lindsay and I had had talked about probably in Ria Dosa is. Keeping it cost neutral to the village. In other words, as somebody comes along and thins and certifies their lots. That lot would get a discount on the wildland protection fee, but whatever savings they realize are gonna be. Passed on the cost to the non-certified lots. Is that?
That's mild.
Still the the thinking.
That's mild, my thinking.
Sure. Is that what uh Guy was?
That's something that guys are supportive of, yes.
Like through a fine or?
No, not through a fine, you just take the fee. If people are exempt or paying a minimum, then whatever revenue is being. Lost. From that discount is then dispersed across all non-thin lots. The goal being over time that it becomes. Uh. Economic incentive for someone to thin their lot.
Yeah, well, and I think Ria Dosa did it that way to treat it more of a carrot as opposed to a stick to begin. They did get to finding eventually. But it was really more if you can incentivize people to thin their lots, you're gonna get that. Twenty, thirty percent that we're gonna do it anyways, they might do it faster. Um, if there was some incentive to to do so.
And Manager Weir and and Public Works Director Epler, I would like to understand, I mean. How you feel about it and also. You mentioned you'd like to see the rates increased in a round number. Uh, is that?
I mean, it doesn't have to be, I just, it makes. Things a little bit easier, but it's not that big a deal.
Um. From an accounting perspective, you're saying. Um, the fund seems to be. Healthy. Based on what we're spending currently. Um, I personally would rather not. I personally like to not see an increase in the rates, I'd rather continue our. Discussions on a new ordinance.
And and again, that's why we wanted to have this meeting because if y'all tell me that you don't want to see these rates increase, I pull it off the agenda. Right?
Sure.
Uh, so it would actually.
Excuse me, uh, Mister Weir, do we need, is the resolution still applicable because we're setting the fees for the new fiscal year? In other words, do we have to have a resolution to reaffirm the fees for twenty four to five?
Well, I, uh.
It would stay on the.
Yeah, it does, actually in the resolution because the resolution is here specific. Yeah, so that's a good catch, Mister Clerk. We will need to have a resolution in there, it could just be the same amounts.
Um, let's say twenty three to twenty five.
No, that uh.
Or is it? No, no, it's if you look at last year's.
See the fiscal year.
Last year's, it says wildfire protection, yeah, I think that's page three.
Yeah, that's actually in the year.
Right, and that's just a, I'm sorry. In the signed resolution, it says where is the rates for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four? It's just the number.
So that, I mean, that's my opinion, um. I would still like to see us moving on in that direction.
I mean, so if if that's it, I mean, we can have a resolution for twenty four to twenty five. That keeps everything the same. And then we can, um. You know. When you guys figure out what it is you want, we'll bring in legal counsel to have them write up an ordinance. And then that that'll be a, you know, a month or two process to get through the system.
So functionally, um. If if we're going to basically be recalculating, you know, your lot's certified, yours is not, so your your fee comes down by whatever percentage we decide. When. At resolution time or then we're gonna readjust, how are we gonna capture? Shifting five dollars of cost from one lot to another.
Um.
It'd have to be in the ordinance.
Well, so, so there's two things there. One is, we have to have the ordinance written to describe that, to allow us to actually execute that transaction. Then we gotta look and see if our software can handle it, because this is all being billed. And um, how do you reallocate on a monthly basis?
I see, I think monthly, it's gonna be probably too much. You do it quarterly, do you do it? Twice a year, in other words, recalc.
We're gonna rewrite the ordinance, we can make the cycle whatever you want in the ordinance, but even. Even quarterly, I mean, there there is a lot of details to think about in that process because. At what point in that quarter does somebody have to get certified in order to qualify for the discounted rate?
Right.
Um. I mean, so like if the day before. That we do billing. And or the last day of the quarter, if they qualify, do that, does that mean they get the discounted rate? In the next quarter or did they get sit out a quarter? Um, because the billing process, I mean. In in doing that type of adjustment, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's gonna be a lot of interaction.
Most likely, you'd want to revisit it each year to see the different increments and just raise the rates incrementally. To the lots that haven't, based on the certain.
And that's another way to do it, is you could, like we do it now, just do it once a year. Um, and make that adjustment once a year, and then if somebody gets um. You know, gets that certification of their lot being firewise or whatever the terminology is. Then they don't see any benefit from it until the next billing year.
The only other things, I guess, from a rate perspective, you know, um, we have. The job description from Ria Dosa for their forestry guy, I'm not sure if they're paying that out of their wildland fees or not. And then, um, I know, uh, I had a conversation with Manager Weir and Director Epler about we have a second grapple truck. It'd be nice if we had that out doing pickups. You know, if if, in other words, increasing these fees might help cover some of the cost of running two grapple trucks all pickup season long. Uh, we don't have a second guy right now, but we have a second truck.
And that's still something that we're continuing with, is the the collection with the disposal.
Yep.
Which we're sort of working through and I hope to have. A solution by the end of the season.
Absolutely.
Um, but until we have those pieces in place as well.
Yeah.
I think that that's gonna be key to the new ordinance. Um, but yes, I'll just reiterate. That I have been in favor of. Reducing these rates for people that have complied and if there's not a mechanism. To do so now, then I'm in favor of keeping them the same.
So, uh, all I'd say is, um. You know, whatever that terminology is and those considerations are, hopefully the. Fire uh Adaptive Committee will come up with a proposal for that. Um, when the Fire Adaptive Committee is ready for what they want the outline of that ordinance to be. I think that would be an appropriate time to take that ordinance to legal legal counsel. Um, and verify number one, that what we're trying to do is legal. And number two, to write up the language that's gonna support the action. At that point, it would also, before we proceed, I'll make sure that we um. Look in our system and make sure our system can adequately bill that way. If you did the once a year. And it's just a matter of you have another rate here of certified people, right? So you have your initial rate certified people, five dollars, um, you know, and then you start off non-certified, one acre. Ten dollars and so on. I'm not saying those are the right numbers, I'm just using that as an example. That's something I I feel certain we could do, um. But the ordinance is gonna have to read that way. Um, my concern is if you start doing it much more frequent than one year, it's gonna become somewhat burdening, somewhat accounting.
Fair. Okay. So my takeaway for the notes. And for the resolution that will be for be before the council on the twenty fifth. Number twenty twenty four dash thirty two. I'll rewrite that to make it, to to make it say no increase in rates. But relevant to FY twenty five.
Well, you don't even need to say relevant because what happens is if we're gonna redo the ordinance. The ordinance will take care of everything that's currently in place.
But the ordinance will not be referenced. In the resolution that comes before council.
Handle totally.
This'll just be this resolution, just updating that.
Yes. So you have a choice, you can either choose to raise these rates. Or if you don't want to raise the rates, you can leave them the same. At this time, without an ordinance change, we're not able, gonna be able to adopt anything that says for those. Hmm.
Right now, we can't, they're still gonna have to pay. The minimum. Monthly, nothing's gonna change is what I would say.
Yeah, because we could actually insert. I I I need to check, but I think we could insert. Another. Rate for certified lots that would be zero with without changing the ordinance.
We currently don't have a certification process.
That's the problem.
Right.
What that certification process is, I'm not sure the certification. Would be required to be in ordinance, but it would need to be defined somewhere. Um. And and referenced in ordinance.
So I think that's important language to have in the ordinance, and so until we can clearly.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, address that. I think to say this thing again, in my opinion, is to. Just not increase the rates currently. Because we're looking at, at least if we hit the ground running. We'd be looking at. Four to five months before we had something in place.
Realistically, I think you're right.
It could even be next fiscal year. Uh, before anything changes, so. The following fiscal year, I should say. Any other questions or discussion on my side on?
Question. We can we talk or ask questions or?
If you would, Mister, just uh. Little podium and just just state your name and insert.
Uh, my name is Jack Fuhrer, um. On the slash program on certification, who would be responsible for coming up with the certification procedures?
But that's exactly what we are. Gonna need to work through, but ideally, we would like to have a forester. On staff or contract. To help come up with those descriptions and. Assist in the inspections. That would be the goal.
Okay, so we're waiting then for a forester that gotta be on staff?
Manager Weir.
Uh, yes, uh, and Mayor Lindsay, um. So, uh, Mister Fuhrer, we actually have submitted an application that we feel some confidence that we'll receive that will help fund a forester for the village. And um, oh, we should be hearing any time now whether we're gonna get that grant. And if we get that grant, then of course, we're gonna go through the process of hiring a forester. Uh, if we get the grant, hopefully, we'll have a forester within a month. And so my recommendation would be to wait until that forester's on board before do anything. We can keep working towards it. Just before we finalize anything, i- if we get that grant, I think that we should um. Probably let that, at least let the forester uh. Give it his or her blessing.
And and there were several that went to Ria Dosa a month or so ago to see their process. We have a copy of their ordinance, we have a copy of their forestry. Department's procedures, job descriptions, and so we're looking to just duplicate as much of that as we can. Um, obviously, it's a. Rough day in Ria Dosa today with all the fires going on out there, but they've had the most successful thinning. Slash program. Slash program in the state, and so that's why we're.
And arguably, the country.
Yeah.
And um, we've got everything lined up to pull the trigger on going out for that job as soon as we're confirmed getting the grant.
Okay.
On a positive note. I've had slash out in front of my property for three years, okay? Stop to see Valerie today to sign up for, you know, permit type thing like I do every year. And she said, um. If someone doesn't come pick it up within two weeks, call me. I'm saying, I'm happy if you get it this summer, I don't care about two weeks. I mean, that'd be great, I mean, I don't know, I I I don't know, I know the responsibility switched from. Public Works to the Fire Department, but I didn't realize it was gonna be that quick. I'm here for single issue here for the certifications, since I have three lots, so. I hate to be rude, but that's the only reason I came. Good seeing you all. Hope to see you sometime later.
Thank you.
Coffee cup, coffee cup.
Sir, Mister Fuhrer.
Jack.
Okay, with that, uh, let's move on to item B. Discussion Resolution twenty 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 four dash thirty three Regular Municipal Elections. Manager Weir.
Uh, yeah, um, yeah, this. We had this in the back at uh in the beginning because we were just mimicking. What was there last year and uh we should have pulled this out of the packet, so there's nothing to discuss here.
Do we need to go to council and just reiterate that there are no council elections? So this just gets wrecked.
It comes completely out, there's nothing to be acted on, there's no action. All right then, easy enough, moving on to item A. Uh, Discussion Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty four Water Sewer Availability Rates. Manager Weir. Uh, would you like to defer to? Greg Repler.
Director Epler, are you ready? Yes.
By the way, Director Epler uh came in today for this meeting while he was on vacation. Uh, thus the scruffy appearance. I was camping with my grandson, so.
Sorry to take you away.
Man camp two thousand twenty fours. Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Uh. I do believe there still needs to be increase to the water uh. Sewer availability fees. Along the lines of, per CPI, three point three percent.
Three point three?
Yes, sir.
And the reason for the increase would do.
Well, the reason for the increase is uh is just the continued maintenance cost. Uh, a lot of all the infrastructure. Uh, it's prone to failing, you know, I just need to uh. Stay on top of it. I'm very well aware of the fact that our water and sewer rates. Are quite a bit higher than other places. Uh, but we'll say we deal with a lot of challenges up here that very few communities do. A lot of them related to living in an outlying environment. Up in the mountains. Uh, dealing with the infrastructure that was taken over. Uh, yeah, in in my honest opinion, a lot of it was installed without any oversight, quality control. And uh. Water lines and sewer lines can last many years, but if they're not installed correctly. First go around, it's an issue, you know, we have a lot of issues everywhere. And uh, price of materials absolutely is uh. Is not going to that. And the later to uh maintain and repair. The infrastructure and facilities goes up on a yearly basis as well.
Although, I know we're on discussion B. For your sake, um, I'm assuming that you would. Have the same feelings on items. Uh, F and G as well.
Yes.
I mean, and it's true, we'll never have enough money. Water department. And the water department to uh. In the next, I don't know how long, to get where we need to be. So I do think uh. We need to offer Director Epler all the help we can get financially. The other. I'm 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 optimistic that when we get the new water meters online. Um, we're hoping to see a revenue there, maybe we can readdress rates next year. But, and uh. Uh, I'm 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 not a fan of raising these rates, as C pointed out, they're the highest, some of the highest in the state. But again, we have. Extremely unique challenges here.
Given the number of two-inch lines and bad hydrants and lack of sewer. You know. That roads and water are gonna spend the most money in this village over the next ten, twenty, thirty years, so. Nobody wants to raise rates, but we desperately need the money in those departments.
Anything further for Brad Repler?
Just a point of clarification on Resolution thirty four. Recommended three point three percent increase.
Yes, sir. Um.
So, and and I can give you, if y'all if y'all want those, the actual numbers, thing that's. For the uh monthly rate for the water, the availability fee. Um, is gonna be twelve dollars and eighty-five cents to build quarterly at thirty eight fifty five. And then the avail availability fee of twenty eight sixty-two. Uh, build semi-annually at one seventy-one seventy-five.
That's what the.
That's what the increase, that's what they'll be.
If it's okay, um, I'd like to just go ahead and. Address items F and G as well, have Manager uh Weir. Speak to those rates. With the. Uh, three point three percent increases recommended. I'm sorry, you're looking for the uh sewer rates? Bulk water and bulk water days.
Um, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I'll have to go and uh.
And we can discuss it at the meeting on Tuesday.
I mean, as far you want the specific amount.
I was just curious, yeah, what the what they would be.
I mean, I need to go pull that.
And that's okay.
The actual rate table is not included in the package.
And what you quoted before, wasn't that the water sewer rates? Or was that?
Three point three percent is gonna be the rate that we're gonna be eligible to raise. The percentage of we're gonna be able eligible to raise the rate by for all. Um utilities.
It's the water and sewer rate.
Water and sewer rate.
So what he was quoting was the availability fees.
I previously had quoted the available.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Cause that's the availability fees are in a separate ordinance. I mean, a separate resolution. So there's a resolution for the um availability rates. And then the um. Yeah, so I I'll need to go pull that if we don't wanna know those numbers.
I think you said the sewer availability, not the rate we go to. It's twenty seven seventy-one now to go to.
And it's gonna go to twenty-eight sixty-two. Uh build semiannually at one seventy-one seventy-five.
Again, this is a working session where we're establishing direction. And the direction I'm getting for writing up the resolutions. For the council meeting is about a three point, not about, is a three point three percent increase for. Resolution thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. No, 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 thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six, and then we get into the tap fees. Right, that's my understanding so far.
Just, that's right, well, one, one. Information there, water sewer availability rates on the agenda is twenty-four dash thirty-four, but on the resolution of the packet, it's.
Oh, that's last year's resolution in the deck. We just provided that for informational purposes and. Resolution numbers will be different from year to year.
So. We're gonna recommend that on all three of those, or that's the gist is the waters who the water sewer availability. Water sewer rates and then the bulk water all with the three point three percent?
That's that's the recommendation staff, yes.
What are the, can you elaborate? What are the bulk water? Fees?
Um I didn't like them on pitch. It's basically what um. People pay, we have people that come in like uh the people that do the cement plant, and they come in and they buy water off of our fire hydrants. And that's an example, bulk water.
So with that, I'd say we just move on to um. Yeah, item H. Discussion Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-seven, schedule of tap fees. So uh. Are you gonna pull the taffies? What were you gonna pull?
Yeah.
Roger, are you prepared to?
Yes, it's gonna be the same, but I also um. Wanted uh wanted to mention that I think. There, we need to take a serious look at the village code and ordinances in relation to. Uh. Water taps and sewer taps for service laterals. Uh in particular, in the instance where. Uh somebody buys a lot, water tap is on one corner, and they want it on the other corner. Uh I do believe that the that. Burden of cost. Should be put on the owner.
It currently isn't.
It's not very, it's not really clarified.
And I didn't know that there was an option. Um to do that at the same cost. Um I thought where your tap was is. And then you could, so in the past, I have paid for a wet tap. In addition, but you're just saying there's no documentation to support how to charge for that?
It's it's not clear enough to me. I need to research a little further and yeah, I'm sorry for. Not having reached researched it more, but it's just something that came to light, a situation on Friday. That made me feel like I needed open, at least plant the seed and get the discussion started on it. What what it appears is that there is a method of. Of figuring cost and labor and doing a wet tap. Uh where in reality, I would like to put put the full burden on the landowner to hire. A properly licensed contractor to do that tap. Uh it just simply ties up our crews for too long. But if 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 it's preferred that we continue to do it with our crews, I'll go along with that.
I I'm not suggesting that at all. I think I think using the contractor would make sense in anything outside of your traditional scope, so. If you have a tap on the corner lot and they choose not to use that. Then yeah, I would shift the burden to them and as far as the cost of pen contractor. Um obviously, you'd have to have some kind of inspection.
Yes. Yeah, we would, we would have to have some oversight on the on the on the tap itself, but also the restoration of the road.
Exactly, and I also think that that helps keep it clean and we're not. Trying to change a rate.
Yeah.
Or have a specific rate, it almost need to be just time of material based on how different every. Situation can be.
Absolutely. Uh I know the challenge will be uh. Limited number of contractors in the area that are capable of doing that or have experience doing that.
Yeah, I can understand the. Well, I understand your limited resources as well.
For forgive my ignorance here, but isn't this mostly gonna come up on some of the very large plots where that's primarily. Your five, ten, twenty acre tracks?
Yeah, we we have had two on on smaller lots ask if if the meter location could be moved. Uh one instance, we were able to by running a line lateral right away a little bit. Uh another one wanted it from the other corner and uh. Convince them to make it work where it's at.
I guess that's another issue. There, they come along these lines for discussion, but I know that I know for a fact that a lot of the pit. Is off. By. Tens of feet. Um so in other words, where your actual property corners are, the utilities. Were set. I mean, it could be as much as fifty, a hundred feet.
Not real.
On the neighbor's property and in front of the neighbor's property on the right of way. And so. I know those have been a contentious issue too. Whose responsibility is it to bring it?
To the corner.
To the corner.
Yeah, it's a, I don't believe it's the case in all of the bid. It's definitely the case.
Village West.
Yeah, Village West and uh the Aspens.
The Country Club, yeah, the west side, in other words.
Yeah.
So yeah, I don't know who's where that burden falls and how we address that, because it is a. It's it's an issue and every, every other lot is in the middle of the lot or set into the lot. Where the others, it's not on, not in their right of way at all. I've also noticed that that can also impede access sometimes. Where the meter taps are. Utility junction though are. When they're set into a lot. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have some answers prepared for those situations.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we'll have. You know, u- unique situations come up and wanted to be known. I mean, we'll exhaust all measures to. Make sure we, you know, in the end, we're gonna do what's right, we're gonna do the right thing. Um but also on some of those larger tracks, if the. If the tap is is off by twenty or even even fifty feet, uh getting it to that corner may not be as big of an ordeal. As going a few hundred feet to the other corner. Uh or we can can go lateral within the right way for certain amount of difference. It's uh. We gotta work on a case by case basis, but I think we we need to have the ability to say plain and simple if that's where you want your tab.
Uh you can put that tap wherever you'd like, that you're gonna pay for.
I will say in the past, anytime I have to uh uh. Get a water service from a different location or tap into the sewer and to do one hundred percent of it myself.
So uh. The schedule of tap fees, now we do have.
Had the schedules coming, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, I thought they were. Included in the packet. I didn't realize that last year. Uh in the packets that were uploaded, cause we print off the previous packet that uh for the meeting that included this. Uh they didn't have any of the attachments included in the previous packets. They only had the resolutions. So I have them coming right now over here in just a minute.
So what you'd be looking for is clarification, the ordinance on the corner issue. It wouldn't necessarily be a change to the this resolution, but the actual ordinance clarifying.
Yeah, to and also establish that we do have the ability to to put the burden of that on to the owner.
Is this, are we, are we also looking to increase the schedule of tap fees by the three point three percent as well? Is that something that we're considering? Manager?
Yes, I'm sorry, more said.
Are we looking to increase the schedule of tap fees by the three point three percent as well?
Yes.
So you're seeking some, maybe some specific language to those wet tabs?
Yes. I just, I thought I brought it up while you were getting the schedule was kind of had to.
I mean, I think that could be a policy. That what 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 you miss, manager, is. Uh it tends to occur more on larger parcels, but where your half is already predetermined for your water meter and your sewer tab. It may be more convenient to have it somewhere else along the right way. Uh but to tap in those locations is costly to the village. And. Not only should there be a fee involved if we do it, but. Kurt would prefer that that burden fall on the property owner.
Uh so higher. Higher than of installation.
I hire a certified contractor to do the installation on a wet tab. Just because of the what the taxation on the resources. To accommodate that, even if we are charging for it, the time involved, what it takes away from other properties. That's his concern.
So would we be looking at, in addition, so there'd be a tap fee? If um the connections are basically already in place. Uh and there would be a separate tap fee for changing that location or for. Um if there is no location. Yes, it would be separate, but what it what it would also uh include is the encroachment fee deposit. Where they would have to put put down a deposit for the disturbance of the road that would be held until. The road is restored after the excavation. So it would, it would, uh I think we would have to come up with a a wet tap fee. If a contractor was going to be doing it and uh. But follow the same process as any excavation in the road where the deposit is given. Restoration of the road. So I I think that's possible, if that's what the council wants. Um I would need to review the ordinance. Uh to determine if it would need to be rewritten in any way to accommodate that. Or if we can simply include that as an additional fee level in the current ordinance. Um.
I mean, my my suggestion would keep the fees the same. And then the additional cost for this is on the owner, including the installation.
Okay.
There would be an inspection. Before it's covered, and like you said, a deposit that would have to be made. Um for the waterline itself and the roadway. Um but I don't think we need to add an additional charge. I mean, I don't know if that could just be a policy. That we will set your meter at your predetermined location. If you choose to have it done elsewhere, the fees all remain the same, but then that burden is then shifted to you. Does that make sense? It does. So that makes sense to you, Kurt?
Yeah. And I wanted to be be made clear, we are capable of doing wet tabs and willing to do so. We have a couple of meter installations right now. Where the water service lateral is underneath. Primary set at secondary power. Primary and secondary. Uh fiber optic. And some foam that there might still be somebody hooked up to. So we make made the determination that. Uh not only. Now, you know, the installation isn't easier. It's not easy to do a wet tap, but thinking towards the future. Um we just wanna get it away. It's pretty rare that you have all the dry utilities and wet on the same corner.
But in that instance, I mean, what you're saying is you you chose to do a wet tap at that point.
Yes.
So that was, that would remain up.
Yeah, we we wouldn't put any burden on the.
In that instance.
Pretty under that one.
So these are the current rates.
There is language in regards to sewer hookups that uh. Try to define. The uh level of responsibility of the property owner. Uh but I think we need to look at those as well, cause some of the. The language used isn't completely correct. A discussion for another time. Again, wanted to plant the seeds.
Well, I'm hearing that the three point three percent increase is not applicable to the tap fees. That we write that up in a way where changes. To the current installation are then on the onus of the order.
Well, actually, we're talking about tapping method, the tap fees or. Tap fees, something.
Yeah.
Well, we are talking about taking the tap fees up by the three point three.
Yeah, right.
But there is still a.
Correct, still.
Well, again, I think first for simplification, we're looking at increasing the tap fees. But as far as Kurt's concerned with the wet tabs. That. I think it should be a policy. In place that. If you choose to have. If you choose to set your mirror a different location. Yeah, that burden falls on the owner, so. I don't think that will affect our resolution, Dennis. We'll just be looking to increase the tap fees.
I understand.
So I know I may have come out left field with that, but it's on.
It's a good, well, we're on the topic.
But we uh uh also, we're having our first Roads and Infrastructure Committee meeting tomorrow. I'm sorry, on Friday and uh. So some of the things that I would would like to start off discussing in that first meeting. Is uh some of our rules and regulations and policies. How enforceable they are, unenforceable they are, so. We can discuss that.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on the scheduled tap fees? Uh so then moving on to item I. Uh discussion Resolution point twenty-four dash thirty-six, meter installation charges. Uh like, man, we're just looking at a three point three percent increase. For the cost of a. Uh. Meter install. So and and that's. The maximum that we're. Allowed.
By order, uh by ordinance, we can only raise the rates by the uh CPI.
So my concern is, is that enough? I mean, is the cost is of what we're charging for. Meter installation, is that enough now that you've set a bunch of meters?
Well, uh surprisingly, the uh the 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 cost of the consumables is has been kind of flatlined. For the last couple of years, they really went up during COVID and availability was tough. Uh but the prices have stayed relatively the same. Um the, but still labor has gone up, you know, every everything else, so.
Will the new meters? Well, I mean, we're gonna go over to the new meters, obviously, it we still have some backlog of the old ones that the. Well, I mean, we're gonna go over to the new meters, obviously, it we still have some backlog of the old ones, the the meter swap. Process hasn't started yet, but will be soon, so when we get to. You know, next spring, the first meters that gets to set, will those be backstock or the new ultrasonic style meters?
Ultrasonic.
Okay, and and will will the three, are those meters? A wash and cost versus what we had been inventorying at the village, or is? Are they more expensive?
Uh, they're actually, yeah, and obviously this comes from uh. Uh, sustainability partners and their group to be able to buy mass quantities. Their their cost of beers are lower than what they're paying for.
Right.
For meters right now.
And this is just the, so. Let me clarify, this is the meter installation charge, does that include the cost of the meter? I don't believe it does, does it or does it?
Believe it, does.
It does include the cost of the meter.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then. Item or paragraph two, installation charges shown for one. And one and a half inches and larger meters is for materials only. Includes the water meter pressure reducing valve and dual check back load. Prevention devices.
But what you're saying is even though we're moving to the digital meters, they're actually. Based on the rate at which their sustainability partner buying their less. And what we're paying for mechanical meters.
But. Uh, again, this is maybe for next year, but at some point, sustainability partners will be done. And the village will be buying those meters for individual installation and new build sites, do we have? Any idea if, because like you said, they're they're buying them in in huge bulk buying quantity that we won't have, I don't know how how. Many you buy meters at a time, but are are we?
I I don't have that answer for you right now, but I will get it.
Okay. I just said that meter is gonna be a thousand dollars more than the one we're currently buying for inventory now.
It's not that big of a big of a difference, we're we're not buying the ultrasonic ones, uh. But uh, you know, as with anything. Yet again, we'll try to predict a couple of years down the line that something's gonna cost.
Sure.
But uh, there there's not such a difference in what they're paying from what we're paying for regular ones, but there is. You know, a difference.
Well, I was I was shocked at during their presentations at what. They're able to get those meters for.
Yeah.
I mean, it really, it was a few hundred dollars, right, four hundred dollars a meters. So.
Now, for the standard.
Yeah.
Now, one thing, you know, I I should mention, and it and you know, I am pushing CPI increase for everything. Through, but in regards to the the new water meters, as we start getting accurate readings. And if we find ourselves uh recovering money from unbilled water usage due to. Inaccurate meters. Then uh perhaps uh. Some point during this year or. At this time next year, I know we have a little better opportunity to to look at the water rates if we know. If 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 we get the revenue from these new meters like we feel we're going to when we start recovering lost water. Then uh. Uh, then we can look at at passing some of that uh benefit on to the consumers.
I agree.
And and Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, uh, when they did this process in Logan. They recognized uh twenty five percent increase in billings and Logan doesn't have, didn't have. My understanding is they didn't have near the issues we have and and the number of meters like we have. Numerous meters that don't, hundreds of meters that don't work at all.
And and in their presentation as well, there has not been a meter study yet that has not recognized.
At least twenty percent.
Yeah, at least twenty percent, there was one in Louisiana that might be worse than we are.
Yeah.
But they were halfway through the project and already recognized a sixty percent increase.
Right.
So uh.
So understanding that 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 one thing that's going to come out of this, particularly on the meters that are working. But are not anywhere near accurate is people will start experiencing a larger water bill. And absolutely, we can explain it with the. Uh, addition of an accurate meter, so forth and so on. Uh, we have to hope that a higher water bill will initiate water conservation. Um, but I I do believe at some point. Uh, with between rate increases, uh, we're gonna have to find some middle ground, because if we do really get a. Good return on on these meters and honoring the unbilled water usage. Um. Yeah, but and again, until I until I see it work right now, I'm proposing. Let's keep going up.
Well, and and again, I think you you revisit it next year and see if we're, if all of a sudden our water. I mean, it would be fine to be flush with cash, because you got plenty of places to go put that money in the ground and desperately needed infrastructure, so. Uh, and I I'm with you until we actually realize those numbers in our bank accounts, I think the three point three and. Hope hope for better next year.
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh. Director Epler, the one thing is that in our current. Uh, schedule, that's part of the resolution, you'll notice the meter descriptions. And um, I don't believe that these descriptions meet the are the same for the new meters.
There was a sizes.
No, the sizes, I think, are the same.
Just the description.
The sealed register, the carbon, the compound.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't seen that.
So that will need to be updated.
That's gonna need to be updated to reflect the new meters, I don't think we can take these off, because. We still need to be able to build for them until we get them all replaced.
Right.
But we ought actually ought to add sizes. Uh.
The new.
Sonic meters that we're at putting in.
But the sizes, the billing installation charge would be the remains. But yeah, to have a description next to it, under that makes, that's a good catch. Any further discussion on water meter installation charges? And we will move on to item J, discussion of resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty nine. Solid waste trash service rates. All right, I'm sorry, Director.
Uh, again, we're gonna propose an increase CPI three point three percent.
Mr. Manager, do you know why uh solid waste is different? And that it looks like it has to be approved by DFA?
Uh, Mayor brought them, I am not uh sure of the reasoning and why it's okay. A solid waste would need to be approved by DFA.
Okay.
I do think that with solid waste trash service rates that uh particularly in regards to. Multifamily dwelling units that uh give dumpsters. That the the op invited for numbers of uh times that it's emptied of the week. Starts with a minimum of two. I don't think that's sufficient. Uh, spoke with manager Ben Gully about this as well. Um. You know. We should have discussion and consider uh making the a minimum amount. Of dumpster empties three instead of two. Usually when somebody's on a two day empty schedule, it's uh Tuesday and Thursday. And uh knowing that in the winter time, actually, now we have more people here usually on Friday than when we're on Sunday. People have changed their travel patterns some. And uh. So we, you know, we find ourselves in that situation by Saturday morning. Uh, dumpsters being full and next empties and next empties not till Tuesday.
So, Manager, where would that be a policy change? Uh, medicine. Again, an increased rate.
Um, so as as far as the frequency of pickup and how, and it would be a a policy change. There's, it would not be a ordinance change, it's not required, the ordinance doesn't speak to. Uh, that it's the ordinance speaks to resolution, it'd actually probably be best in a resolution format.
So then, as far as we're concerned, is what we're addressing on Tuesday, we're just looking at the three point three percent again.
That's correct.
Um, but while we're on the subject. Good to address. The minimum number of pickups and what that fee structure that looks like.
Well, I think it's a discussion that needs to be had with. Uh, property managers, HOAs, uh, everybody prior, again, wanted to plant a seed, so the opportunity.
But is that a topic for the resolution itself?
No, not for this one, no.
Good. And I guess that's why we're having this meeting, is we get that out and then. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, uh, any further discussion on item J? We'll move on to item K. Uh, discussion resolution twenty twenty four dash forty solid waste transfer rates.
Again, I proposed an increase, but I did you notice there's uh. Um, items on here that we're not currently accepting. Oh, freestocks. We want another, not accepting those. So is it to be left in place in case we do decide to keep or start accepting them again?
I I would keep it away for that reason, if you were to accept them.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
This um resolution has the same language. Uh, council and how reference with the need for approval for DFA, so manager, if you're gonna look.
So y'all are talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about the. This is just a template that Dennis included in here, so you know what the resolution number is.
Yeah.
This is not the actual, the way it's gonna be written out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that's.
No.
What are you reading?
This uh.
No, on your, on your current.
We can staff recommending. Item uh K for the three point three percent. Increase. Uh. For those fee structures. Okay, any other discussion on item K?
No.
The only thing I would add, uh, Mr. Mayor, is on uh on this item. Um, I do not believe this item is subject to the three point three percent limitation. Uh, it's. Uh, the three point three limitation is related to utility fees. And I don't think this is solid waste transfers is considered as utilities.
And then the the other, I guess, the other was any updates on perhaps scales versus cubic yards? Uh, how you see that progressive?
Uh, we in the the but this next year's budget, we've budgeted for for scales, looking at an in and out scenario. Uh, plus a smaller scale for smaller loads, but what I mean by in and out is a simple plate scale. When somebody drives in, they're weighed. And then on the other side of their shop, you're weighed on the way out, difference is calculated, they didn't weigh.
But to that point. When do you see approximately, I mean, what kind of time are we looking at? Going to a weight structure versus a cubic yard structure?
Uh, would say by end of September, that'd be the reasonable goal.
So should we include language? Although it'd be hard to identify those, why, it wouldn't be though. Based on what we pay to dispose at the landfill, which is by weight. Can we back engineer a fee structure? Um. It it doesn't have to be, I think, in this. But it's something that we need to be prepared to. Or even offer that we might be shifting to a weight structure versus a cubic yard structure.
Yeah, well, the the initial discussion is of uh. Going by volume instead of weight. Uh, but I was informed that this was gonna cost us a lot of money. Uh, couldn't quite understand that, so the the task that I gave was to be, in order to create a rate. Based on the way. We gotta have a total cost, obviously. Uh, the cost that I received was just the the dump fee at the landfill. We need to go deeper than that, uh, and a vast manager goalie to. To work on that, uh, and take things all into consideration. Uh, labor depreciation, uh, everything, whether it's fuel, fuel, everything. And and to be able to 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 come up with a a per ton price.
So that's a project the young manager are working on.
Yes. Yes.
Um. I just don't know that we if we should include something, it was gonna happen this fiscal year.
Um, so again, um, I will check and have the answer to this uh at the next meeting, but I do not. Think that this ordinance limits us to the uh same time constraints. As the utilities.
And and then.
And so.
Also the number.
We could pass this, or we could go forward with whatever you guys want this to be now. And come back to you once we have the scales in place to do additional rates based on tonnage.
And then based on that we're not held to the same constraints of the three point three percent. Uh. Is that what staff's recommending is a three point three percent increase, would you like to see anything higher on any particular items right now?
Uh, no.
Three point three across the board?
Yes. Well, go going back to the scales, one other thing I really wanted to see to, you know, to do a. Uh, you know, a proper analysis, I wanted to see what a transfer uh facility revenue. From that point of sale was at your closeout. Uh, to uh. To basically get it all together, to be able to do a comparison of, and we'll have figures of what was haul to the the landfill. And hopefully be able to ascertain. You know, figuring by volume or by weight, uh, you know, we've we've got a. We've got to come up with a rate that doesn't cost us money, but isn't too excessive as well.
Yeah, again, I think it's the, it it's just from personal experience. The the same trailer with the same load and then a drastically different price based on who's working.
Yeah.
Uh, at the moment. Uh, and that's not. I'm not picking on any, this has been going on for twenty years.
Well, it's estimating rather than actual weight.
Exactly.
You know, well, the 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 scale takes away the uh, the need for whoever's working. Point of contact with the customer over there. Takes a judgment call off their shoulders.
I hope we weren't too.
Not at all. Thank you all for uh. Meeting in the closet back there.
It it was internet.
Any other discussion on item K? Well, I just like to thank uh Director Epler for coming in today, go to appreciate it. Moving on to item L. Discussion resolution twenty twenty four dash forty one traffic violation fees. Like Lieutenant Strickland?
Sure.
I don't think we have a copy of these scheduled for the.
So. What I have for you is basically what I I took our current. Uh, statute of policy and. Just redid the fees, but according to what has been. Uh, assessed with the surrounding counties, cities. Um, the ones that were available, these. Uh, currently, the top page shows our current penalty assessment for. Traffic citations, ma- basically moving violations. Uh, penalty assessment is something that we have to provide. Uh, when we stop somebody by law, we have to be given the option of a penalty assessment. Uh, and when reviewing. Uh and when reviewing our current policy, I am noticing that it is delinquent in. Uh a lot of the moving violations that other um. Municipalities have put on their uh uniform traffic code. So we definitely need to review and update. Some of those statutes showing that there's a penalty assessment to those uh whatever moving violation it may be. Um the second, so there's the first three pages kind of show what our penalty assessment is, the next three pages, what I have refined. Refined those uh payments, what they would look like. Um. I have basically added thirty dollars. Approximately. So starting from the the lowest traffic citation for ten mile, up to ten miles would be sixty dollars. Uh and then moving on up. The last three pages show what the current uh rates are at. House. The municipality town. So their lowest one was seventy. Uh seventy six dollars. And then moving up and and then a lot of people have construction zones and fines for those, we don't have that, so I also added that on ours. Um and basically just added a twenty five dollar fee moving up, so twenty five, fifty, seventy five, hundred, moving up that way for the uh the fines. Um now I I went through and looked at the other. Um somewhat surrounding counties, municipalities, and I have Simiron, Cloud Prop, Rio Rancho, and Sunland in this packet as well, if you wanna look at it. Um but this is just what their current rates are, very similar to Taos. Uh some higher, Rio Ranch is a little higher. But um. Part of the reason that we're looking at redo or or upping these fines is because twenty five dollars for a parking. Citation, it isn't really doing a lot of deterrence. Uh I've had individuals come to me and say, well, that's the cost of parking there, I'll just leave it there. I'm like, well. If you do, I'm gonna have to tow it, but. Uh they really do. Park there and they'll, I've had them at multiple days, same days, I'm sorry, recurring days. I've had to sign them again. They just. They don't care, so um part of it is trying to prevent. Violations, at least movement, moving violations in our in our village. Um. The other part is the cost of doing business is also increasing. So we have our costs for housing individuals at the prison. Um also because of. Uh the hospital, if we have to take someone into the hospital for whatever reason, uh that cost continues to go up as well. Uh so that helps address those. So with that. Uh I stand for any questions?
So I have a question, and this one shocked me when I learned it a couple of years ago, Officer Finch. Um passing a school bus in New Mexico.
Yes.
It it is more expensive to park in a handicap spot. To get a ticket to do that than passing a school bus with its flashers on.
Mm-hmm.
In Texas, that was, I think it was four figures if you got pulled over. Passing a school bus with its hazards on.
Mm-hmm.
Um I I found it on the Taos one, it's actually hundred sixty one dollars, so so we're above Taos there, we're two hundred dollars and. Suggestion of two thirty um. That one to me um. It is is, and I don't know if New Mexico is just that much different, but that was a big, big infraction to pass a stop school bus with the stop sign on. Um and I've seen it happen a couple of times, and I've seen you guys pull them over, but uh at at two hundred dollars, I just, that one shocked the heck out of me that.
More in comparison to.
In comparison to some of the surrounding states, so I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, you know, hey, let's raise all of our fees so high that nobody ever. Breaks the rules of the road again, but the school bus one, I guess, just shocked me, so is is that something that could be looked at with others? Because what happens is, and I know, you know, we have the school bus that goes all the way through town and somebody gets in a hurry and doesn't see, it's just.
Right.
It's a recipe for disaster.
Certainly, a- and uh when I met with the legal counsel, his his biggest. Um concern with raising rates would be any kind of litigation that comes with, oh, you know, you you guys are. Um attacking the the lower uh income earner. In comparison to anybody else and um. The the argument I that we were presenting was, hey, we're just moving up. To everyone else, we're not trying to outdo anybody, we're not trying to make a statement, we're simply raising our rates currently. To what everyone else has. Um now, if there are individual um. Areas that we wanna focus on, I don't see a problem with that, especially if we have concerns. Um and that would be a foundation for legal counsel whenever we. Get one.
Well, I appreciate the data to show you, it's it's not out of line, I just was shocked at how. Low that one was compared to other states where I've been, cuz that was a big, big no-no, that was.
Sure.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh council, one of the concerns on these parking rates that legal counsel did advise us on is that. State statute, the rates within the state statute have not been raised in, I don't know, a decade or something.
Yes.
And um the statute does say that we can charge our own rates, but they have to be similar. So the question is, what does similar mean? And um so he did advise us not to go too far out, there are some municipalities that have. Uh he even gave us one example, I can't remember, was it Floyd or somewhere? Um when we had lunch with him.
I I don't remember which.
But there was one that um, you know, has really raised the rates dramatically. Uh and so that's the only thing is, his concern is that if we get too far out of whack. Uh with anything that it may uh come back and bite us legally and then. You know, we wouldn't be able to sustain that if these are ever appealed and whatever, or there could be a class action lawsuit, is what he thought. Uh against all the municipalities that have raised their rates. Too much, so we did wanna raise rates, we talked about bigger numbers than this. Um at one point, but uh I think that these are reasonable rates, although I agree with you a hundred percent on the school bus, I mean. Maybe we look at three hundred dollars for that.
Why do you, because it's right. Six below it is parking in a handicap space, two hundred and fifty bucks, but passing a school bus.
Well, the the new rates are two eighty for two eighty and two thirty.
Could could we, and I'm not suggesting getting ourselves in trouble, but if we could go find somebody in the state that has a higher. At least fine for the school bus one.
They're out there. Do we need to find it? I mean, I think, again, I think to Council Crane's point, I'm correct or I'm wrong, but everything else looks to be in.
Yeah.
I I agree, uh the school bus, and and it's only because I'm shocked too, having taken kids for years to the school bus. How many times do some people pass a school bus?
Yeah.
Uh and 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 I would say one in five gets pulled over. Uh but it is, that is a scary one. Uh you know, you got little kids on the highway.
Mm-hmm.
Um and and to his point, I think. Without looking at Taos, I didn't look at, would you provide Rio Rancho?
I did.
Did it have, did Rio Rancho have a?
I think it just had one copy of Rio Rancho.
But also be good to look at signage and. Speed limit reductions during school plus zones. Uh during school bus because of drunk off.
And that would be revising our our overall UTC policy, right, the Uniform Traffic Policy, we can make changes to that and amend it. Um and and part of the argument to staying similar to the the state statutes is. The state has added extra fines beyond just the um speeding fine, right? They have extra fees tacked on, so the overall actually looks similar to what all these other municipalities are doing. And so that would also be another argument, yes, I I'm sure we can focus on certain areas that.
Well, I'm with Counselor Crane on the school bus and.
Yeah. Uh and another thing, you know, uh you saw the highlighted part that I added, those are ones that aren't even on. The current one we have now, so there there's definitely some changes that need to be done. To our policy, uh and that was what I was highlighting was, these are, these are the simple ones that are on everyone's that that I thought of and went and looked and said, oh yeah, it's on. These other moving violations, why is it not on ours? So uh we have the policy, we have the. We could just need to devise a penalty assessment for it, I put the lowest one seventy five dollars uh that it would be, but. Yeah.
Well, the potential danger from passing a. Uh school bus. Is even greater than taking away somebody's handicap spot, which which is a bad thing to do.
For sure.
But at least in that case, you just denied him a spot. Passing a school bus, a a small child could run out in front.
Correct.
And. What do you do?
Yeah, I think, I think. Into Counselor Wick's point, I mean, I don't know, but I've never seen a municipality that has reduced rates on a bus route, speed limit, obviously, it's a school zone typically. But anything to deter, to let people know that. That's a serious. Uh I don't. Yeah, so I think with maybe maybe readdress that one. Uh again, just looking at it, I I I feel like you've done a great job. Uh but that's something that we've we have discussed in the past, just that, what particular fee.
Sure.
Uh and I'm not opposed to. Doubling what you have here, five hundred dollars, I mean, that's, I think, again, a serious offense.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you said five hundred?
That would be my recommendation. And that's not out of line in other areas now, maybe not in New Mexico. Um but that's a serious offense and.
Let me see what Rio Ranch says. Looks like. Sixty one, right? So yeah, Taos, Taos is cheaper than we are to pass the school bus. I thought I saw Jerry with his hand up in the back there, but maybe he was.
I was holding up five fingers.
Five hundred?
Man. Or five figures. Man.
Mayor, Council, Manager, guests of. Municipal court has a limitation on any traffic misdemeanor, the maximum fine they can uh issue is five hundred dollars. So I'm cautious not to go over five hundred dollars on anything, and that's even for uh DWI offense uh involved in accident with minor injury. So for the municipality here, uh five hundred dollars would be the maximum that anything could go to, and I do agree, school bus zone, uh passing school bus. When it has the stop placard out in emergency, warning lights indicated, I think that would be an appropriate maximum fine. Now, that's for penalty assessment, please keep in mind that any violator that is stopped or contacted by law enforcement has two options. To accept the penalty assessment at the scene of the stop, or to contest the citation and and appear in court. So uh with that, the judge then has the leniency to go lesser than what the recommended penalty assessment is, or greater than that, and to include court costs on top of any fine.
And I agree, five hundred.
Could you go ahead and introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, yes, I sure can, my name's Jerry Hoiff, uh I'm on my second day as the Chief of Police here in Angel Fire.
Rio Ranch shows one fifty.
Deeper than Taos. Well, I I I would support raising it, and you know, again, I appreciate the comment about it, it sounds like if we try to raise it above five hundred, we're gonna have a problem with municipal court, but. You know, three, four, five hundred dollars, somewhere in that range is, I I think, uh wholly appropriate, given the risk involved in the infraction.
Sure. So we can't make a decision on that because this is a work session?
Sure.
But what I would like to do independently is recommend that the council get with Lieutenant Strickland. Uh with your recommendations, so that when we have the next meeting, he can bring kind of a a consensus to the meeting for approval.
Sounds good, right? Are there any other discussion on traffic violation fees?
Yes, yes, sir, uh Mister, Mister Manager, um. These are ob- obviously ordinance changes. Does that make the resolution? Still pertinent to this discussion, or do we come back with ordinance changes to?
Yeah, so this is um un- unlike everything else, and I asked legal counsel if we could uh separate these out into a resolution, but these will be. Um in the form of an ordinance change.
Yeah.
Uh that we'll have to do, because these prices are better than the ordinance.
These will not be resolutions.
These will not be a resolution.
Any other discussion on item L? Let's move on to item M. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, shit.
Um discussion uh resolution twenty twenty four dash forty two, plus figure twenty five holiday schedule.
Uh Mr. Mayor, Council, this is uh basically mimicking the uh. Uh what we're proposing is mimicking the holiday schedule we had last year, of course, what's in your packet is from the prior. Uh the prior year resolution, we would simply update it with uh days of the week. Uh on some of them dates and year, uh but we are gonna be proposing these same days uh in the council meeting on the twenty fifth.
So at at some point, not too long ago, I think. Uh village management coordinated with employees and for Thanksgiving, Christmas, and New Years. Those were the proposed dates that worked best for the employees over those particular uh holidays.
You mean having the holiday out in the actual.
The what you proposed to update this, yes. I'm I'm agreeing with what's presented.
I see.
And I will say too, that it was. The practice of the previous administration. To close the day early or noon prior to the holidays. And I and I don't see that continuing.
Uh when I was an employee, I loved it. Now, not so much.
Okay. Uh is there any other discussion on the holiday schedule? Okay, then we need to circle back to item A, I would ask uh. Let me go get some. So at this time, um moving on to item A. Discussion ordinance twenty twenty five zero one, amending Title Nine adjustments. Uh combining two sides.
These are mentioned, I'm going to definitely listen.
Thank you, Mr. Members of Council, Santos Marquez, I'm a zoning consultant. This is the second batch that I mentioned to you earlier when you approved the first batch. Of looking at making some more flexibility in our land use code. For folks who are looking at a townhome product and also wanna plat that, so that first batch, we looked at. If you have access to public water, public sewer, we really didn't care about your minimum lot size, because there really wasn't a conflict. What we forgot is that. The very end of the development standards in these zoning districts was a classification says minimum lot width is twenty five feet. So we wanna match that with the amendment that just went out earlier this month. Uh same same provisions back uh matched that accessibility of water and sewer, so it's not just anywhere across those districts. Um there was a noted conflict within your old districts is that the height standards weren't the same. Uh one of the commissioners asked if that was really just a typo that was kind of thought that they would be, so that's brought forward. There's one other uh standard that you have, it's on private drives and garages off private drives, but there's an additional setback off of that. Uh edge of the drive to the door, and my experience is, this is the same code that we have in the city of Dallas where. They put that provision in for a twenty foot setback, so somebody could get off the road. They put that provision in for a twenty foot setback, so somebody could get off the road, would not block traffic or an alley. And in my experience for twenty years, we were allowed to go get a variance for that. And it was always approved so long as you used it on a Mac garage or opener. So using that experience that if you have a drive approach that's. Not twenty feet from the edge of the private drive, if you have an automatic opener. We could still look at it as a permit review, but the other standards that you have really. Should have been in the first round, it's just we didn't catch it on that first round, but again. To provide more flexibility in housing development and for planning opportunities as well, where somebody could be a fee simple owner. For their home, um rather than having just to do it as condo. This provision needs to be codified with what you considered before. So this was a good debate at planning and zoning, uh there was no other discussion about. Make, you know, we, you're right, we should have caught this up the first time. Um. I stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? Well, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Um okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.